I'd like to call this meeting to order, please, if you can all rise and join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right. I'll accept a motion for the approval of the May 20th, 2013 school board reading minutes. I'm sorry, don't ask that at once. All right, we've got Rhonda has made a motion. And Hank was second. Do we have any changes, any discussion? All is good? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous, thank you. All right, we have a correspondence folder this evening?
No, I don't think there's anything in there.
All right, combination's good news. I'll start with good news from Mountain View. Recently, Mr. Lee, who's our tech ed teacher, just got a donation, very generous one, from Mass Road Grain and Building Materials. A fifty-six, four-by-four, eight-foot post for a total of eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. So that he can start building some raised flower beds around the school as a community service project for his students. That's great, and that was donated from Mass Road?
Yeah, Mass Road, yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah, it's huge, it's great.
I have the good news from the elementary schools, quite a bit of good news from all three of them. Student council collected books for City School in Philadelphia for the last four years, or excuse me, for the last four, ten, four years now. And they've been collecting the books for the last four weeks. And we've been able to collect over three thousand books, three thousand seventy-three books for this school that does not have a library. Last week was Wellness Week at Maple Avenue, helping snacks were provided for the teachers in the staff lounge each day, much appreciated. Student council read nutritional facts each morning during announcements, and the whole school participated in our mile health and wellness walk Friday. And other activities were planned throughout the week. And sprinkling our school's annual carnival is this Friday from eleven to two o'clock. So it's a great time to stop by and see all the fun. Glen Lake had a wonderful kindergarten field day last Friday, and to come they thought hot, hot weather. They borrowed lots of shade tents and added extra winter activities to keep everyone cool. And they had excellent parent participation, kids had a great time. And additional end-of-year activities coming up include a visit and story time by the Goshawn Public Library on June fourteenth. The GHS seniors visit the kindergarten classes on June seventeenth. There's an Albury Judy Panco's concert on the twentieth, preschool end-of-the-year celebrations on the twenty-sixth. And the kindergarten end-of-year celebration is on the twenty-seventh. And from Bartlett, on May twenty-first, the Goshawn Department of Public Works visited Bartlett during National Public Works Week. Each grade attended a presentation in the gym, and the students were shown a PowerPoint presentation on what the Department of Public Works does. And then the students were able to go outside to see several pieces of equipment. And then Bartlett held its annual Memorial Day program on Friday, the thirty-first. Each grade of students sang patriotic songs, recited poems for the holiday. And on Thursday night, Bartlett will be holding its Welcome to Bartlett Night. During the evening, incoming first graders and their parents will learn about the programs. There will also be a bus available for students to climb aboard.
That's great.
Okay, from the high school, we have National Honor Society donated five hundred dollars to the New Hampshire Coalition to End Homelessness, adding to the GHS Walk Against Hunger total donations of over two thousand dollars, which made GHS the winning school for that, um, this year, the Walk Against Hunger. Also, we are going to have an Assembly Period One this Thursday, June sixth. We have this, uh, called Agents of Change, and they've been working for two years on a new anti-bullying video. And they're planning to premiere it this Thursday in several screenings with small groups of students with follow-up discussions. So that should be very interesting, and they've been working really hard on that. My leadership class was part of some of the filming, and we helped a little bit last semester. And academic awards night will be this Thursday, June sixth, seven PM in the theater. And nine students from GHS traveled to Quebec City a few weeks ago for a wonderful three-day trip. Look, Miss Andrew, they visit many cultural sites and events, and they're gonna greet you.
Thank you.
I know there's lots of sports stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Well, first off, we got our yearbooks today, and this is the first year they're actually in color. So first year ever at Goshawn High School, so it's really exciting. And they worked really, really hard. So in particular, Dale Keith and Matt Arroyo, they're like the tech guys. So for the past four years, they've been doing yearbooks. They should really thank them for all their hard work. I can pass it around to see if it lands. So we got those today. Marine Bio is underway, so our last two days are Tuesday and Wednesday, that students will go out on the marine bio trip. For student council, their next meeting is this week, and it's their senior send-off. So basically, they, they have a group of students in student council that organize senior send-off. And basically, each one of them is assigned a senior on student council, and they sort of like buy gifts and, you know, sort of make a little collection of stuff. And then they present it to them, sort of like they're the going-away gift. And it's really, really nice for all the student members, student council. Last Wednesday was the senior athletic banquet night, which was really, it was really great. The food was great, the speaking was great, and there were a lot of awards handed out. I don't have the list of all of them with me, but also the night of, the baseball and the lacrosse team boys both won, which was really great. One was really close, and the other was like ten to five or something, I don't remember the scores. And then the end of the week was last Friday, it was rescheduled due to weather from the previous Friday. Oh, and at the Athletic Banquet, Wynne Lobel was inducted into the Hall of Fame, Goshawn Hall of Fame, which is really exciting. And they had a really great PowerPoint slideshow and presentation for her, which is amazing.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Yeah, we, uh, one of our student athletes got quite an honor last week, a young man named Tyler Bar, Pat Barst, sorry. Was named the New Hampshire State Baseball Player of the Year, which is one kid for the whole state gets this honor. So I thought that was pretty good. Frank says he's a wonderful kid.
We had lots of kids who made this.
He also got the Gatorade Player of the Year.
Yeah, okay, I know. That's wonderful. Hi?
Did the high school team win? They created the most fantastic traffic jam you ever saw. And they'll be playing Thursday night, seven o'clock, at Southern New Hampshire University. And tonight, one of the high school graduates is being autographed clinical.
Excellent.
Mike Larry.
That's right.
I wish I was here.
I am, too. Did you DVR it? Did you DVR it?
I'm gonna just hold the meeting closed until thirty.
Right, there you go. Um, I was at the literacy and arts night at Maple last week, and it was fabulous. That school was a celebration of the children's art and, and writing projects. It was wonderful, and they seem to have great turnout. They do every year, they did a great job. My other good news is, I think you guys know, we got the planter planted at Mountain View. So the school board planter is, is planted at Mountain View. So it's, we're all ready to go until the fall, I hope, so.
It's making the SAU's plastic office look really bad.
That wasn't my goal.
If I can add to on the, just the athletic piece is that, um, the big, uh, so we have three teams who made it to the semifinals for championship. So baseball is playing on Thursday against Sanborn at seven o'clock at Southern New Hampshire University, and that's a semifinal game. Softball is Tuesday at seven o'clock at Southern New Hampshire against Co-Brown, again a semifinal game. And Boys Lacrosse is in the championship game on Tuesday at seven o'clock at Exeter against Bedford. So that's for the championship.
Oh, it's at Exeter against Bedford? And that's their last game, right?
Yep, that's, that is, if they win, they'd be the state champions for our division.
Good work, guys. All right, any more to add? Jenny?
I do know that the MVMS baseball team went to semifinals, and they lost in semifinals, but they went into the playoffs. And I know a little kindergarten guy who, um, but the field day at Glen Lake was really awesome. They had a, a really good time. A lot of energy expended.
All right, public comment. Seeing none, we'll go to our CNI committee reports. Policy Review Committee. Got anything? Keith? No? Okay, next meeting is June tenth? All right, PNC?
We met tonight, and we went over the scholarship awards, which we'll talk about later in non-public. We also talked quite a bit about the board retreat. I will be sending out an e-vite to all of you, so we can determine a date, the week of August nineteenth. I think we originally postponed it because it conflicted with the Mountain View Middle School principal's search. And we thought it, it would be better later on in the summer, once, and if we have a superintendent, interim superintendent in place. So you'll be hearing from me, and that's it.
Thank you. CNI, um, we have not had a meeting since our last meeting. We will be meeting next Monday at seven at the SAU. And I would like to invite everybody who is available, who would like to come to that meeting. That's the wrap-up end-of-the-year meeting, where we see where everybody has gone and, and what's been accomplished, and what their plans are to, um, do for next year. And it's also gonna, we are going to develop our work plan for next year. So anybody who's interested, and we will get invitations to New Boston and Dunbar, and you can attend that meeting if you choose as well.
Thank you. Budget Committee, we have not had a meeting since. Next meeting is June twentieth. Anna?
I have a manifest totaling eight-hundred-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. It's low because payroll is six-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-one-fifty-five. There are only three highlighted items of five thousand or more. One was a payment to Merrimack Special Ed Collaborative for Student Services, fifty-five-hundred-and-fifty bucks. The provider, which is Transportation, for sped thirty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-eight dollars. That's no chump change. And then PSNH for Mountain View for the month of May, eight-thousand-sixty-three dollars.
All right.
I'd like to move the manifest of eight oh seven to nineteen eighty-five for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Suzanne? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you. All right, the electric supplier bids as well, could you discuss that at your meeting?
Yeah, we did. Pick, get away, yeah, go for it. I'll just add the, uh, the call.
Second page of your handouts, to kind of give you a summary of what we've learned, what we've gathered. It compares the current PSNH rates, which we are paying at this point in time, nine-and-a-half cents, point oh nine five four. It also takes a look at the PSNH proposal, that's in front of PUC now for approval, that's a rate drop to eight point nine eight cents. And then we had two bids from Integris, one being at seven point one seven cents. That was refreshed to seven point five one cents last week. We have, if you take a look at the left-hand column, it's the total kilowatt-hour usage through this point in the school year. That's a million-one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand hours. We spent two-hundred-twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars with PSNH through this point. And if we take one of the Integris bids, and the current one that's out there is the seven-and-a-half cents, that annual spend would be reduced by forty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. That kind of gives us a feel for what kind of savings are out there if we do participate in this new supply source for electricity. The bids, unfortunately, are as volatile as heating oil and propane. And it's daily, is what we're looking at right now. We, my intent is to bundle all of the SAU nineteen customers. That would be the New Boston School District and Dunbar for the upcoming year. We will be meeting with Dunbar on Wednesday evening. We will be meeting with New Boston on the twelfth next week. And at this particular juncture, what I would ask for is the board's authorization for administration, the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to execute a pricing deal that's going to be favorable to, to the school district. Jan?
Just out of curiosity, what is, what is the level of, what's, what's the delta?
It looks above four-tenths of a cent.
Well, no, 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 but I mean, day-to-day. I mean, is, are we likely to see?
No.
I mean, given the number of hours that we use, a relatively small change actually means money.
It does. There was an eight-thousand-dollar change in two weeks on annual usage.
Out by assume.
Oh. Had the board acted two weeks ago, it would have been an additional savings of eight thousand bucks, if you will.
And was projected to do over the next week?
Don't know.
My guess is it's largely driven by oil prices.
Right.
And it's pretty much, it's a two.
I'm moved that we authorize administration to make the best, best deal possible on the electric rate.
All right, Ms. Suzanne, moving to offer as administration, make the best deal possible on electrical rates, seconded by Philip. Further discussion?
Yes, Ray, does it make any difference if we bring New Boston, Dunbar in on the rate? Does that make a difference?
Yes, I'm bidding SAU nineteen as a total.
Because of volume?
Yes.
Okay.
And the meter reading date for the bill that we just paid at Mountain View was May twenty-third. And they usually would do it, even if we made a decision now, probably wouldn't occur till six twenty-three. So that's what I'm thinking, 'cause they, they switch it on a, on a regular meter reading date. And the motion didn't say anything to that effect to make the decision before, but I'm presuming we would want to make it after you get the approval of the three. And we're not, we're gonna meet, so if you don't get approval of one of them, then we'd have to get another quote, and you bring it back to us Monday, the seventeenth?
I would like to move on Thursday, the, Thursday, the thirteenth.
If the other two say yes, but if one of the other two school districts don't say yes, will you be able to make the move?
I think that the motion was that they would make the best deal possible, so I don't think we have to come back.
It was not a contingent upon.
Agreed, I, yes, that's what I understand the motion to be. And basically, what I'm trying to do is ascertain whether that best decision would likely be made before we can meet again. Because if one of the other two school districts doesn't count in, would you believe that you could still make the best interest for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is it all in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you. Okay. Elementary Facilities Building Committee report.
We have been attempting to schedule a meeting with the committee, and it's, uh, we've not been successful in pulling a night together that everybody can make the meeting. So what we're proposing to do is for administration to get together, this will be Brian and myself, sit down and catalog all of the activity from the last year, get it ready to put into a library. And I suspect that the board is going to need to appoint a new committee to conduct the public education aspect of this whole thing. We'll have to probably better define the charge, so that we can share it with potential candidates for the committee and, and move forward. But in the meantime, we will catalog everything that we have done, all of the notes, all of the actions that we've learned, results of anyway, and have that available for the next group. I can't really add anything more than that.
All right, and that's enough, thank you, Ray. Goshawn-Dunbar Tuition Committee report. There haven't been any meetings since our last meeting. We do, I've been trying to schedule an appointment with Board Council to talk about the finer details. The best we could do for a non-meeting date, that would be with Brooke, Sarah, and Ed, is July fifteenth. We did, I know, I know.
What is that?
We did July fifteenth. We did have a tentative meeting scheduled, anyway, it is a regular Monday meeting, and we had talked about it, I think, a month and a half ago, the idea of having to. So I did go ahead and take that date. I offered up every other date I could think of. They did want, they, they could meet on July first or se, uh, not, yeah, July first or second, but based on our past conversation, y'all have been pretty firm that nobody wanted to meet the week of, of July fourth. If you want to retract that sentiment, I could re-approach for that date, otherwise, we're looking at July fifteenth. Everybody's happy?
What time?
Six o'clock. SAU.
Here?
SAU.
SAU.
Is that, is that gonna be a problem for you?
And then come here for a meeting?
Coming up, please?
No, I think that was in place.
No, that's gonna be the meeting, my friend. Yeah, and, and it's, I've been told to expect at least two hours. So now I, unless there's something incredibly pressing that needs to be addressed, now there will be no other meeting.
Okay.
All right. Superintendent report.
Just a couple of things. June sixth, which is Thursday, is CIP for the town. I know Hank is on the committee, Ray will be there, but I would encourage any board member to be there as well. It starts at seven o'clock.
Academic Awards Night.
It is, it's all kinds of conflicts. I also think it's important for the board, though, to be present, and, you know, you have building projects, to be able to talk about them. So I just, I would encourage board members to try to make it.
It might be too long, from the school and library.
Yeah, yeah. So just know that that's happening as well as, so we, Thursday is Academic Awards Night, the following Thursday is Scholarship Night. So you can put those on your calendars if you're interested. Let's see, Wednesday, at Maple Ave will be the first retirement presentations, and Diane and Keith are gonna do those. And then I'll, I think the next ones are that next two weeks, so I will make sure people get those and get the information that you need to do your retirement presentations. I would like to congratulate Lisa Johnson, who is your new elementary teacher rep to the school board starting next year. She, we finally got somebody come forward willing to do it. And so I, um, we had an election, 'cause that's how it goes, so we, but she won. So I invited her to come to the next meeting, as I did all the teacher reps, so that they could see how it goes, although Sam is filling in again, so you won't have much. We're gonna nominate, I'm bringing forward nomination for principal for Mountain View. So we're starting to work on, MC is working on the Dean of Students position, so we've advertised for that. And we would like to hold out until we have the principal on board, so since this is part of her administrative team, that she can have a good say in that. We have a good administrative team involved in that. We've invited Dunbar and New Boston administrators to participate in that as well. So I think we have a good, well-rounded committee for that. And so we'll be moving forward with that as soon as we have that nomination, so that she can, that person can be part of the process. I think that's all I have. I'll talk about reflects a little.
All right, thank you.
Want CIP? Want CIP? Know what happened here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the only, uh, last week was fire and police, and the police were very easy, uh, just vehicles, basically. Fire department had one million dollars worth of vehicles, plus the start of a one-point-seven-five-million bond issue for the three stations.
Just one-point-seven-five?
One-point-seven-five, no.
On my view, wasn't it like three million dollars?
Um, it depends, like two stations combined are three million. It never starts from the budget committee. All three combined are about four million, so.
I don't know if they got it written up, it's gonna use some dark pictures.
I don't know that I have those registered, there are those, Andy, from, for the budget committee meeting. Yeah, yeah, you do, two stations are two million, three stations, four million. One's one-point-seven-five, one station's one million, the other one's one million, so it must be the bigger of the two. So, all right, thank you, Hank.
You're welcome.
All right, old business, Honeywell. All right, old business, Honeywell Energy Audit. What do we got?
The Admin Finance talked about it, and the recommendation from the subcommittee is to go forward, the Admin Finance Subcommittee is to go forward with the original proposal plus the windows, and not include the roof.
Special wire, or why not to include the roof?
The quote for energy-efficient tiles came in at about, it wasn't a quote, the pricing came in about, the low end was about $225, and the value of energy efficiency was nonexistent, from my understanding. It was very low. Ray may be able to take, talk more of it, or Jerry, but it wasn't of any kind of significance for an energy-saving kind of proposal. And Suzanne, go for it. You did not want to support.
I did not want to finance the roof, if at all possible.
How are we going to pay for it? That's my next question.
We might have that answer in a couple of weeks.
Through the unencumbered funds. We remain at $263,000, minus about $5,000 for.
Incendials.
Some incidentals that have just come up, so there's about two, we're still stating at about $258,000.
Question? There are tons of other work now. Is it agreed that we have to fix the roof this year?
Water's coming in.
I mean, from everything I've heard, from the Budget Committee, et cetera, it's wigging.
Yeah.
That's what we heard.
So, are we all agreed that we have to repair it this year? What is coming in?
That's our recommendation.
Our recommendation is to take it out of the unencumbered funds of the 2012.
That's not my question. My question is, are we all agreed that we're going to fix it? I think so.
We don't have a choice.
That's my point.
The question is whether or not it gets financed.
How it gets financed, how we pay for it.
The answer, I guess, is we're going to do it.
Yes.
Okay.
We seem to have reached close to consensus.
Critical mess there.
We've never, we've never come to consensus, though.
We didn't vote it yet. We haven't, we haven't voted it, but there seems to be a general consensus, to answer the rest of the question.
My concern is, the reserve fund balance is extremely low this year. There are some safety issues that need to be addressed at the school, and we won't be able to address those safety issues if we anticipate taking the roof out of the unencumbered fund, and that concerns me.
Brent, could you refresh my memory? Is it on this, how much more it's going to cost to do the roof? With interest, I can't.
Which is about $40,000 for interest, I think.
$40,000 in interest, which is quite a bit.
And no real energy gains. I mean, if you're going with Honeywell for energy, you're not getting anything for that money.
We're getting a new roof.
You're not getting any energy savings, which is what Honeywell's all about.
I think that was the concern of the Board at the last meeting, was that, does the roof really provide, is it really the right place to put that? Is, is there enough energy savings that, or are we just trying to finance it that way?
The report that, the report that did come back is that the installation in the attic at Mountain View is about as good as you can get it. And the addition of an energy-rated or an energy star roofing shingle isn't going to buy all that much more. What it looks like now is perhaps a 10% increase in cost, but as Jerry had pointed out to me earlier, we would now have a lifetime guaranteed roof, rather than another roofing job that had a 25-year guarantee on it. So, that's, that's kind of the trade-off, from the $198 number to the $225 estimate that we had gone.
What do you mean by lifetime warranty?
Lifetime warranty.
As long as that building stands?
Yeah.
$225,000, and that comes with a lifetime warranty?
Is that what you had, Jerry?
It's a 10-year floor replacement, and then, of course, it does.
It gets prorated down.
Yeah, but 10 years full, and then it begins to.
We really don't care.
Yes.
Our lifetime.
Next 75 years, we'll get a new roof.
Sure, after a certain amount of time, the prorating is zero.
Yeah.
Based on hedge life span.
All right, so, based on this discussion, we do have the recommendation of our, of the A&amp;F Subcommittee to go with the original Honeywell proposal, plus the windows for GHS. Do we have a motion?
That would be my motion.
That's your motion. So, Dana's motioning, Phillip is seconding, and the motion is to go with the original Honeywell proposal, including the windows, and then adding on the windows at Gofftown High School. Any further discussion?
So, can we, because we really.
Please stop, please. Go ahead.
The motion, the motion needs to be this motion, this resolution, because this also allows us to enter into a lease agreement, the purchase, so it needs to be this with a different dollar amount.
Is that the resolution basis?
It is.
The one that says June 3rd on it? And Ray, what's the dollar amount that needs to go in there?
2, 0, 3, 2, 500. We're just removing $200,000, right?
The amount that's in there now is $2,332,500. That gets changed to $2,132,500.
Just $100,000 difference?
Right.
Okay.
No, $200,000 difference. 23 to 21.
21, 32, 500. And that, let the record reflect, my motion is in regard to this document at $2,132,500.
Do we need to read that into public record now?
Actually, here's the way we could do it. We could, we could simply make a motion to accept the resolution of June 3rd, 2013, as set forth in the document titled "Gofftown School District in Hampshire," the District Option 2, replacing the price of $2,332,500 with a price of $2,132,500.
Okay.
And then you would.
Attach this to the minutes.
Right.
I do have it here.
You have it?
Okay. All in favor?
So, that would be my amendment to Dana's motion, if he'll second it.
Do you want to, well, if we do that, then we have to vote twice.
Okay.
No.
I'd rather just vote once.
Can I just have a motion, please? That is straightforward.
Can I, can I use that as the motion?
It's just needed to remind.
Yes, that was my intent.
Great.
Good clarification, thank you.
Denise, do you need that restated, or no?
I do.
You need that restated?
Yes.
All right, Dan, can you please state your?
I'll give a micro shot. I move that we adopt the Gofftown School District, New Hampshire, the District Option 2 Resolution authorizing the District to enter, I'm just reading the top section, lease purchase agreement and energy performance contract dated June 3rd, 2013, with a single modification of changing the amount so stated of $2,332,500 to $2,132,500.
Do you want to take new roofing out also?
And do I have a second, Phillip?
Yes.
Will you have a second, by Phillip?
And.
Yes.
And striking the two words, new roofing.
All right, okay.
Can I just make a comment?
You may, because I was going to call for Ashle by listening to the.
I can't vote on this until we have a resolution on our roof as well. Because if we vote on this, and we decide we're not taking it out of the reserve funds, we still don't have a new roof at Mountain View. It's not just one thing in its separateness, it's one thing that's affecting a bunch of decisions tonight. And I think the resolution on the roof has got to be settled before we decide yes or no.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I don't know if you're going to feel any better, Keith, but in looking at the list of Mountain View, the list of the things for the end of the year, there's so much on there. The one thing that I think just about everybody has on their list is the roof. We cannot put that off any longer, so we're going to do the roof. We may not be able to do a heck of a lot of anything else, but hopefully, we'll be able to do the roof.
Someone, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I think the two situations are independent. We've all, the only thing that agreeing or supporting this motion does is to support the motion that's on the table, and to clearly and unequivocally say that we're choosing not to finance the roof.
Jenny?
I think to add to that, we're choosing not to finance the roof, and we're choosing to not do a lot of the safety repairs that we need to do, because if we have $40,000 left in unencumbered funds, that's not going to cover a lot of the safety things that we need for the school. And I, for one, think $40,000 of financing far outweighs having unsafe situations in the schools. It's just like, we have kids, we have teachers, we have staff here that need to be safe. We have a lot of money in our buildings. I just think we can't worry about, you know, there's not enough savings in energy as far as this, so it can't be put in, and then overlook the things that we're not going to be able to do, safety-wise, at the end of the year. I have a pile of that.
All right, all in favor for motion?
Aye.
I'm opposed.
You're opposed.
What's the 4, 4, 1?
4, 3. I had a 4, 2, 2, but I'm abstaining.
No, final objection.
4, 3, 1.
I think that's the right option.
There are only the two of us here.
Yeah, the math. So, we had four in favor, we had three against, we had one abstaining, the motion carries. All right, unencumbered funds.
So, here would be your opportunity, if you wanted it, encumber funds for the roof? Okay. I would say we're running out of time. You do have one more board meeting, but I mean, right now, you see on the back of, on page 3 or 4 of Ray's, I mean, right about $260,000 in unreserved fund balance, so if you want us, I mean, we have pretty much been after everybody to make sure that everything is encumbered, so you know what that bottom line is, it's going to be around that. If you want to make a motion, we can get to work on it, start it, plan it, get a contract going.
The recommendation from the A&amp;F Subcommittee was to hold off for two weeks, see what was left, do the roof first, and whatever else we can. Did I sum that up?
Can we ask why we are holding off two weeks?
There was some trepidation that if anything else crept up, and we had already encumbered the funds for the roof, and had a contract out, then we wouldn't have anything to do, anything else.
You're leaving your door open not to do the roof?
That is a possibility. I am not adverse of having a motion this evening, setting the funds aside, giving Ray or the administration the charge to go out and get some RFPs, and it still gives us the opportunity to retract that, does it not, Ray?
We could prepare.
We can prepare an RFP.
Well, we've already, I mean, we already have multiple bids.
I'm not sure, Jerry, if they're bids, or do we have to go, do we already have an official bid, or do we?
I think we would have to.
Refresh them?
Yeah, absolutely.
Weren't they refreshed four weeks ago?
We just refreshed them, yeah.
There was some confusion as to the architectural and/or a three-tab system, so I would like to get that all in writing, and I think we can do that quickly.
So, Jerry, the email from May 8th confirming those bids, you don't think?
I don't think they were apples down, so I would like to just have the opportunity to put those together, make sure that they're all on the same exact spec, but we can do that quickly. There's no reason we can't have it by the first, you know, Monday of next week.
Okay, well, we don't have a meeting until 17th, but we're going to need to make sure whatever we need for that meeting, otherwise, it's done, that you guys are going to meet again.
No, we need it done for next meeting.
We need it done.
So, do you need a motion for a charge? What do we need to do to make sure this happens?
We don't need a motion to get another, to make, Jerry, you're clarifying the quote?
Absolutely.
Because if it's $225,000, we're probably out of luck of money on that one.
Right, I think it was the, whatever the tiles were for the lower end, not necessarily what we called their forever tile, which really isn't, the guarantee.
Energy star.
Yeah, it's not necessarily, a regular roof is what, just it starts to come down by a percentage first year, and not just holds steady for 10?
It's just a 20-year warrant for a three-tab system.
So, I believe it's the three tabs.
Right after the first year, to begin to get covered.
And have you found, in the last 20 or 30 years, we actually went and had a claim against the warranty?
We have.
We have?
Here and actually with Glenn Lee.
And those are the three-tab tiles?
Yeah.
Okay, so Jerry, by our next meeting, you are going to have all the appropriate quotes buttoned down, so we can get a vote, y your name from the Board, to move forward.
Absolutely.
And get this taken care of. Okay. I'm looking at Dunbarton's agenda. That's helping me at all. Update on the interim superintendent search?
Nothing new since the SAU meeting, except for you guys should have received an email today from our attorney.
And there will be an SAU board meeting tomorrow night.
Email from?
Our attorney.
Sarah?
Sarah Murdaugh.
I didn't see it. I didn't see it.
And again, just to reiterate, we do have an SAU board meeting tomorrow night, here, 7:00.
Which means the ARDA meeting is tentatively scheduled.
That's canceled.
No, that was canceled there.
No, not done yet, for a week from tomorrow. We are, we are exchanging some emails?
Yes, I actually, you were the last person Wendy was looking for an answer from, so can you do the 11?
I sent that today.
Okay, perfect.
So, that's why I'm saying it's likely a week from tomorrow, which would be the 11.
The 11.
Next up, guys, RBMS After-School Program, one-year option renewal.
We, this is the last several pages in your handout. It's a copy of the proposal that we received from the YMCA to run the program at Mountain View again for next school year. They are continuing with the same rate structure that is currently in place, and that's $50 per child for a five-day program, $15 per day for anything less than five days. The Y is also looking to provide a $2,500 scholarship for needy families or students to participate in the program. So, we, the feedback that we have been getting from the school is that they're extremely pleased with the program that the Y has conducted this year, and the recommendation would be to engage with them under these terms for the upcoming school year.
We've got a motion by Phillip. Do I have a second by Jenny? Any further discussion?
Ray, could you refresh my memory? Were they very different from any other bids we had last year?
These were the only folks that bid the middle school last year, Hank.
The tax exempt, they should be lower than anybody else they did. You don't make taxes at all.
Jenny?
Are the prices the same as last year?
They are.
Cost for the parents?
Yes.
Any other further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
We are unanimous, thank you. Employee Health and Dental Reimbursement.
So, if you recall, we are receiving, or the school districts, all three school districts in the SAU are receiving money back from LGC for health and dental insurance, as a kind of a premium holiday, so Kate, Ray, and I have been meeting, talking about that money, and Kate has been working really hard with LGC to put together multiple different spreadsheets on what that looks like. We, so, what I'm bringing forward is a recommendation from the Board. So, the Board is, the Gofftown School District is actually getting a total of 207,000. School District is actually getting a total of two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars.
I make a motion easier for the group.
So for, for medical, it's a hundred-and-sixty-five, two sixty-three, twenty-three, for dental, it's forty-two, three ninety-four, thirty-three. What we are proposing is that, through many, many calculations, is that we reimburse participants, whatever their proportionate equal share was, it's, that goes back to two thousand and eleven. It is a range, anywhere, the average by, by Gofftown District was eighty-four dollars for a participant, it goes a low of sixteen dollars and a high of two-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, depending on what plan you took, how long you were in the system for, so they've really done, I wanna make sure we weren't overpaying somebody, but basically, it would give them back the proportionate share, so for, total to the employees would be, a total between health and dental would be forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. The district would get a check back of a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, four thirty-two, that will come in, we believe, in August. So what I'm looking for is a motion to authorize us to reimburse participants for their proportionate share based on what we're getting back from L G C.
Um, Jenny, your question, or?
No, I was gonna make the motion, but.
Okay, so Philip's been pushy this evening, and he beat you to it, um, so if Philip makes a motion, and Jenny seconded, do I have any further discussion?
Just, just out of curiosity, for what period?
For two thousand and eleven, this is, and we anticipate this likely happening as they've realigned what they do, so it's for the period of two thousand and eleven.
Of the calendar year or?
Two thousand and ten, eleven.
Two thousand and eleven, eleven, school year.
So to the, does that mean we're, there are some people who we're gonna have to chase down?
For employees who are no longer.
Employees, yeah, because this also includes retirees, but I think we have, we, we keep a pretty good database, 'cause we have to, like, for retirees, we have to provide them with information, L G C also, because they, a lot of times, if they go through their health insurance through them.
Thank you, Jim.
Then we have those addresses, but, yeah, I mean, we try, it's the best-known address that we have for people, but we have pretty good information.
All right, Keith, you had a question?
Stacy, can you refresh my memory, are we under any legal obligation to give the money back?
Nope, you can keep it all.
Or we can use it any manner we want?
Nope, you can, you can use it and, you can keep the check, some districts are, some districts aren't, I thought this was, to me, the, our recommendation was the fairest way, your employees have paid a portion into it, that they should get whatever that minor proportionate share back is, but the, the board has the right to keep all of that money, it's a reimbursement to the school district.
I think we should think about that a little longer, considering where our budget is right now. I think we should think about that.
If I may, I've, I've already thought about it since we heard about it many years ago, and, and I've already opined, and if L G C had done what L G C was supposed to do when L G C did it, the employees would never have paid it, and they deserve it back, and I don't look at what taxpayers voted on the ballot, I mean, I know we're tight, and that's why we have to sit in these chairs and make these decisions.
And I think.
Suzanne, did I see your hand?
Yes, you did.
So Suzanne, and then Jenny, how's that sound?
I just wanted to know of the district share with a hundred-and-sixty, whatever, five, can we spend it?
That will come in a check in August.
You cannot.
It doesn't mean you can spend it, can we spend it?
Correct, no.
It's not unanticipated revenue or anything like that?
Only if we have another district meeting, school district meeting, I believe, or you go to the Department of Revenue, or the Department of Ed, and otherwise than that, we have a gross appropriation.
Can we agree to do this, can, can we ask if anybody else has encountered this situation where we have somebody here to ask that question of?
Yes.
And then we'll figure out what, what the rules around it are?
Yes.
'Cause it, at a minimum, it's a little different.
Right.
It's a, it's a slider instead of a curve ball. I, I see your point.
It, it might be a, what they call a, a credit refund, and a credit refund doesn't come in on the income side, it comes in as a reduction of expenditures. So I think, I like, I like that. Yeah, we, when, when have we expected to see the check, though?
Not till, like, August.
The end of August.
But Ray and I can research your question, I mean, I, I think the answer to your question shouldn't hold your motion, because that is a separate.
No, no, no.
The question is, can we spend that one sixty-five, and we, let Ray and I research it, and we'll bring it back to your next meeting.
I was gonna say, that sounds like we have, but we'll have, we'll get an answer for the next meeting, in the meantime, Jenny?
Um, I think if, if our employees know that this money could come back to them, and we decide to spend it instead, I got sent a really bad message. Yeah, I don't like that at all.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor?
And I, I need to make.
Do we have further discussion?
I, I need to make a comment that I do not need to recuse myself, because neither my wife nor I participate in the health insurance.
Okay.
So I need that to be clear, in case anybody's wondering.
Okay. All right. No discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you, and we will have an answer for the next meeting on the second half of that, that conversation. Okay, so now we are at teacher resignations.
Pass out. Little spreadsheet of everything. Thank you.
A lot of sharing.
So the, I'm bringing forward a teacher resignation of Michelle Marzelli, who is our E S O L teacher, based mostly at the high school, but covers the district. She has signed a contract for next year, and the board did nominate her, that's why I'm bringing it forward.
Move back up, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded, that's Dan. Any questions or discussion? Do we know why she's resigning?
Got a job close to home. She lives about an hour from here.
Yeah, can I make a difference? All right, all in favor of accepting the resignation?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you. Administrator nomination?
I'm bringing forward Wendy Hastings as the Mountain View Middle School Principal. She went through a, a pretty extensive process here, I know we wish we had more applicants, but, or finalists, but I will say, I, I, I met with Wendy, had an extensive interview with her, had lots of good dialogue and conversation, I think she is an outstanding communicator, I think she is very good with the public, I think she brings the skill, I don't think, I know she will bring the skills we need, she will need some mentoring, 'cause she is a new principal, but I do think that the feedback we got from everybody who went and attended the interview day when she came to the school, all the feedback we got was very positive, I think she will be a nice addition to the team at Mountain View, so I am recommending her, I am recommending a salary of ninety-four thousand dollars to go with that.
Who's, who's, who's the board's, or?
Suzanne and.
Reddick.
Excellent job, Mrs.
Thank you.
I think she will be a, I think she'll work out really well, I think she brings the skills that we need.
And, and the attitude, I was impressed with her, a lot of energy.
Did you get a chance to meet her at all?
I did not, I was out.
Yeah, 'cause it, it was during the time you were there, I, I did get a chance to meet with her, and I was, I was impressed, she was very well-spoken, energetic, not looking to hide from things, come out, talk to the people, talk to the parents, one of the nice things she said was, I welcome the parents in, I welcome the volunteers, let's bring us in, let's be a community, let's work this out.
I was impressed with her as well, very much so.
I will make the motion to accept her.
Motion by Jenny, do I have a second? Reddick, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are, opposed? Did you raise your hand? Abstaining?
Yeah, I, I never got to see, I got here so late.
Okay.
I got updated, everybody left already.
All right, so we've got seven in favor, no opposed, one abstaining. Okay.
Which I will, as soon as she's.
One thing I forgot to add, how many years was that contract?
Just one.
All right, we have teacher nominations?
I'm bringing forward five nominations for teachers. We have Stephanie Anafont, I'm probably gonna kill their last names, who will be a first-grade teacher at Maple Lab, Amy Goodrow, who will be a fourth-grade teacher at Maple Lab, Catherine Mordecai, who will be a second-grade teacher at Maple Lab, we have Jennifer Phelps, who will be a speech and language pathologist at Glen Lake and Maple Lab at the split position, and Allison Sawaki, who will be a fourth-grade teacher at Maple Lab, so Maple Lab's been running and moving along, getting things hired.
Do we have any motions?
The which one?
The third-grade position, or?
I think they may be shifting around. Okay, yeah. 'Cause I think this, this is the end of Suzanne's high positions.
Okay, so Philip has moved the teacher nominations, we have a second by Jenny, any further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you. Student teachers?
And these are just notifications, for next year, we're gonna have Stephanie Billings working at the high school in art with Mrs. Nichols, Lisa D'Arval, who will be working with Bev Saret at Maple Lab, and Amanda Reed, who will be working with Lisa Nicholson at Maple Lab.
Will we have any motions on these?
No, those are just notified.
All right, thank you. Any other business that may be recompulsed this meeting? All right, we do have some non-public tonight, so I need a motion to enter non-public pursuant to R S A model one, A, colon three, Roman two, subsection C, matters which are discussed in public, would like you to diversify the reputation of every person other than the number of public bodies. All right, Hank, do I have a second vice to say on?